Good evening. I will now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, January the 9th, 2023. And we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Graves.
Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity. For more than a decade now, my family and myself, we have been under the leadership of Pastor Michael Bryan of Westside Baptist Church. Mr. President, if it's okay, I would love for him to come up and deliver tonight's prayer.
Pastor Bryan?
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for first this day, this opportunity to be here. God, we pray now for our city. We pray for our city leaders, God. We pray for everyone who holds an office of responsibility. God, we pray for this council. We pray for the people in the districts that they represent. God, we pray that you would move throughout our city in '23, God, with your power, with your peace, with your provision, with your protection, your power to change from killing to kindness, your power to change from confusion to conversation, your power to change from racism to relationship, your power, God, let it flow down like a mighty river throughout our city from the north, east, south, and west side. Cover us, God. Give us more unity, more togetherness, more understanding, more patience, more peace. And God, we pray now that everything that we do in '23, that it will be to your glory. God, bring us together like never before. We put the enemy on notice. He no longer has dominion in the city of Indianapolis. We shall move to greater things, and the victory shall be ours. It is in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
We have 24 counselors present. Counselor Brown has asked to be excused for this evening. As we have no guests this evening who are already not part of the agenda, let us proceed to organization of council. Do I have consent to appoint General Counsel Torey Kim as temporary presiding officer for purposes of the election of officers? Thank you. Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first office for election is president of the council for 2023. The chair will now entertain nominations for that position. Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. Just in this term alone, after leading this body through a global pandemic, through a generational shift in the conversations around race and equity, and through three straight bipartisan and balanced budgets, I would like to nominate Counselor Vop Osale for president of the council.
There's a nomination in second for President Osale. Are there any other nominations for president of the council?
Um, Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
I move that we close nominations.
Okay. We have a motion in second to close nominations. If that motion is adopted, the effect will be to reelect President Osale as president of the council for 2023. So, all those in favor of closing nominations thereby reelecting President Osale, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, President Osale.
I just wanted to tell my fellow counselors that I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve alongside all of you, both as a counselor and as council president. And I look forward to our time together this year and working with every member of the council to positively impact the lives of all of our neighbors as we work to make Indianapolis a great city for all. So, thank you, fellow counselors.
The next office for election is vice president of the council for 2023. I will now entertain nominations for that position. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. I move, make a motion to nominate Vice President Adamson as, or Counselor Adamson as vice president for the council for 2023.
There's a nomination in second for Vice President Adamson. Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the council? Counselor McCormick.
Thank you. I move that we close nominations.
Thank you. There's a motion in second to close nominations. If the motion to close nominations is adopted, the effect will be to reelect Vice President Adamson as Vice President of the council for 2023. All those in favor of closing nominations thereby reelecting Vice President Adamson, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Vice President Adamson.
I just wanted to say thanks. And for many of the thoughts that Counselor Potts had mentioned, I'm proud of the work that we've done together, primarily in a bipartisan fashion with all my colleagues. And it's an honor to serve with you all. Thank you.
The final office for election is clerk of the council for 2023. I will now entertain nominations for that position. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, TK. I'd like to nominate Yolanda Winfield for clerk of the Indianapolis City County Council for 2023.
There's a nomination in second for Yolanda Winfield. Are there any other nominations for that position? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to close nominations. We have a motion in second to close nominations, which would elect Yolanda Winfield as clerk of the council for 2023. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Congratulations, Yolanda Winfield. That completes the election of officers. I now relinquish the gavel as temporary presiding officer to President Osale to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. The next item on our agenda is a certification of caucus leaders. So, I will ask Clerk Gonzalez if she has received certification for the caucuses regarding majority and minority leader appointments.
Yes, Mr. President. I have received a certification from the Democrat Caucus, signifying that Maggie Lewis was selected as caucus leader for 2023 on December 27th, and from the Republican Caucus, Brian Maury was selected as caucus leader for 2023 on December 5th.
Thank you very, very much, and congratulations to our caucus leaders. So, this next item on our agenda is official communications. Clerk Gonzalez.
I have received the following communications. To all members of the City County Council, please fire and solid waste collection special service district councils of the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby identified at regular meetings of the City County Council, and please fire and solid waste collection special service district councils will meet in the City County Building in the Chippewa Council chambers on Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. For the purposes of such meeting, we do not conduct any and all business that may probably involve regular meetings of the councils. Respectfully, Vop Osale, President of the City County Council. To President Osale and members of the City County Council, ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana at cost of publicity, and the court commercial record in Indianapolis, on Friday, December 23rd, copy of a notice of public hearing on par proposal number 3, 2023, said hearing will be held on Monday, January 23rd, 2023, at 5:30 p.m., in the public December room in the City County Building. Respectfully, Sir, refuse protocol council. To President Osale and members of the City County Council, please fire and solid waste collection. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved my signature in the bill of the state to the clerk of the City County Council. The following ordinances, physical ordinances, numbers 22, 26, and 27, general ordinance number 67, special ordinance number 17 and 18, general resolutions 32 through 34, and special resolutions 33 and 34 of 2022. Respectfully, Joseph H. Hobset, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the special communication.
Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for December the 5th, 2022. Do I have consent? We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, and special resolutions. And proposal number 1, 2023, recognizes the work of community partners and city agencies for their efforts towards achieving significant violence reduction in 2022.
This is City-County Special Resolution Number 1 of 2023. This is a special resolution recognizing the work of the community partners and city agencies for their efforts toward achieving significance violence reduction in 2022. Whereas, in 2021, the council appropriated the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan funding to kickstart the mayor's three-year violence reduction strategy, which began in 2022. And whereas, this historic investment delivered a total of $150 million for the implementation of the data-driven gun violence reduction strategy, the creation of the 50-person Peacemaker Program, and the $45 million elevation grant program for grassroots organizations managed and distributed by the Indianapolis Foundation. And whereas?
Through the gun violence reduction strategy, the city of Indianapolis has been able to identify the individuals and groups at the highest risk of being involved in gun violence, and have been able to deploy effective interventions with these individuals through the NDP Peace Fellowship. And whereas, from the violence interrupters responding to the shooting scenes, to mediate and develop relationships with individuals in conflict, to outreach workers who have been identified as very high-risk individuals, to connect them with the life coaches who help the fellows develop and implement life plans, and cities' peacemakers have utilized their experience, knowledge, and dedication to our communities to change the lives of our citizens. And whereas?
And whereas, in 2022, this team of committed individuals interrupted 654 conflicts, provided support at 310 shooting scenes, enrolled 99 individuals in the fellowship, and attended over 2,000 community events, and referred 1,254 non-fellow community members to service. And whereas?
Whereas, additional grassroots supports have come by the way of the elevation grant program, with $14 million awarded in 2022 to over 70 organizations, with future award rounds in 2023 and 2024. And whereas, the city's efforts extend to other 2022 operational budget items, like the continued investments in the $300,000 Community-Based Violence Prevention Partnership, with this year's awards going toward BOY Brightwood Community Center and Voices. And whereas?
Whereas, as a part of the ARPA distribution, 9 million has been dedicated to the investments in modern policing technology for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, which has seen the successful deployment of six new public safety cameras that can be moved throughout the county and over 200 license plate readers. And?
Whereas, through the steadfast efforts by the peacemakers, law enforcement, and community partners, our community is starting to see the benefits of these investments. And whereas, just after its first year of implementation of the three-year strategy, the mayor announced on January 1 that the city has seen the largest single-year reduction in criminal homicides since the creation of IMPD, the lowest level of deadly violence since 2019. And whereas, it's important to recognize the work dedicated by so many, and this achievement, however, our efforts must not stop now. Our communities deserve to see continued years of significant reduction of violence, and to be without the risk of suffering from violence now. Therefore?
Be it resolved by the City-County Council, the city of Indianapolis, and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City-County Council thanks the community partners, law enforcement, and city agencies for their work and dedication in making Indy, our city, a better place for all. Section 2, the City-County Council remembers and grieves the losses of the individuals in our community who have been lost due to the senseless act of violence. Section 3, the City-County Council commits to continue to make investments that benefit our communities and make them a safer, healthier place. And now, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same aside. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, I would offer to speak here, the chief of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department.
Please.
So, obviously, this is an effort that was taken on by many people, many groups. We're so thankful to see that these efforts are showing some positive change in the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police District. So many groups that are helping with that, but special shout-out, of course, to the men and women of the IMPD that are keeping your streets safe.
And one more speaker, Ms. Romi Bernard Tucker, who is the newest member of our team here with the, as the director of the Office of Public Health and Safety.
Good evening, council members. My name is Romi Bernard Tucker. I am the new director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Thank you very much for the honor of this special resolution, especially it being the very first of this year, of the new year. And this is only my fifth day on the job, but it is already abundantly clear that how hard our team, our NDP Peace Fellowship team, and our highly valuable community partners continue to work to wrap around our community, to reduce violence, and improve access to quality of life. So, on behalf of OPHS, I want to extend our sincere thanks to the city county council, I'm sorry, for your recognition of our partners like Indy Public Safety Foundation, the Indianapolis Foundation, the elevation grantees, and the recipients of the OPHS Community-Based Violence Prevention Partnership. We are tremendously grateful for your continued support of our work and that of our partners, and we certainly look forward to another year with positive outcomes. Thank you again.
Quick 30 seconds. Are there any peacemakers, intervention, or any of the grassroots or the organizations here who are grantees? Can you please stand up and be recognized? And officers, can you stand up and be recognized? Any peacemakers here? Stand up. Interventionist, stand up. Thank you so much. And I'm gonna wave my hand. I want to. Thank you so much. This is hard work, and we go hand-in-hand with each other and law enforcement to make these numbers, to make a difference in our community. And I'll tell you, this is 14, because you don't hear it on the news. The murder rate from 2021 to 2022 went down 50%, and you haven't heard that in the news. Thank you for the men and women you hear and see that are not in this building, but in this building, not in this building, who work with us to get those numbers, those murder rates down. Thank you so much for this.
Proposal, the next item on our agenda is proposal 19, which honors Cheyenne Delmar and Mika Curry.
Mr. President, this is a very special resolution this evening for two fine young ladies in our city who should have received national attention for their heroic efforts in our city. This is a special resolution honoring Cheyenne Delmar and Mika Curry for helping IMPD solve a kidnapping case and locating a missing five-month-old twin baby during holiday season. Whereas, on December the 19th, 2022, a five-month-old twin babies went missing from Columbus, Ohio, when a woman took their mother's running car while they were in the backseat. And whereas, on December the 20th, the suspected kidnapper ended up in Indianapolis, Indiana, and Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry interacted with her at a gas station on the northwest side and bought toys from her. The woman asked for a ride to the store, so they assisted her and exchanged phone numbers. And whereas?
Whereas, Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry realized that the women looked similar to the photos posted online of the suspected kidnapper from Columbus. So, they took a video of her and created a game plan to take action. Wow. The women called Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry the next day, asking if they would like to buy toys from her again, and they made plans to meet the woman at the store and call the police. And whereas, Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry called the police while the car with the woman, and they distracted her by taking her to a few different stores. While they got ahold of IMPD, the police conducted a traffic stop on I-65 South and stopped the woman in the car, and Ms. Curry showed police a mugshot of the suspected kidnapper. And?
Whereas, the kidnapper was taken into custody that day, and Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry's actions leading to the traffic stop were praised by detectives in Columbus. And whereas, Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry knew that one twin was still missing, and cold temperatures and the snowstorm were starting, and they found the suspect's bus map in the backseat. So, they drove to a few different bus stops, looking for the car. And whereas?
Whereas, Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry went to Papa John's on Indiana Avenue and saw the missing Honda car covered in snow and a baby in a car seat. And they saw police officers nearby in the plaza, so they rushed to tell them about the baby. At 6:40 p.m. that day, Ms. Curry and Ms. Delmar helped locate one of the missing twin babies and was found safe and in the custody of IMPD. Now, therefore?
You want me to spin?
Therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City-County Council firmly believes that our communities are stronger and safer when we all work together. Section 2, the City-County Council commends Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry for their heroic actions, not only of helping IMPD capture the suspect, but helping find a missing baby. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has done. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-4-14. An ISO move.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we do have Ms. Delmar and Ms. Curry present, but before they come forward to be, again, recognized by this council, I'd like to bring up our chief of police and our deputy chief of investigations, who they should probably bring on staff to, on the investigation team.
There we go.
Deputy Chief. Chief, you want to comment a few words about our two young ladies here? Our deputy chief?
I'll just say that when you talk about community policing, this is what it looks like. I'm proud of these two women. Were it not for their actions, I'm not sure that we would have saved that baby. I'm proud of our detectives who worked around the clock, including me, who went out that night to help look. But this is what community policing looks like. And for that, we should give them a standing ovation.
Yes.
We're hiring, and we need you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Chief, you want to say anything? You want to say anything, Chief?
Well, I could only echo what Deputy Chief Adams said. Fantastic work by these two Indianapolis residents, and we appreciate them and always will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both ladies for your generosity, for your support. Thank you.
Churches Harvest Thanksgiving.
Whereas, each year, at the end of October, the food collection begins. A few weeks later, a large box of trucks filled with groceries on Tuesday before Thanksgiving shows up at Amber Woods Apartments. It's Harvest Thanksgiving. And if you don't know what that is, it's on the far east side of Indianapolis, in my council district, District 14. Whereas, after the truck and caravan of church members arrive, the group circles to pray and thank God for His many blessings after two decades. They've been coming out for 20 years. Venture Christian Church of Carmel, Indiana, has been collecting bags of groceries and delivering them to dear friends in Indianapolis. And whereas, the ministry has blessed thousands of families. Each family receives five bags containing items for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, a Thanksgiving meal, as well as a bag, a wellness bag, and a $10 gift card to Kroger. Over the past 20 years, this ministry has graciously donated an estimated amount of $300,000 to $500,000. And whereas, in the past few years, the ministry has expanded to include Agape Christian Church of Indianapolis and Clarksville Christian Church of Noblesville. With their help, the Harvest Thanksgiving ministry can bless families in Noblesville as well. And whereas, the successful organization of the ministry goes to Jenny and Jason Bell Posby, who volunteered their time as the dedicated leaders. They work in conjunction with John Vance, outreach minister at Venture Christian Church. And whereas, in a three-way partnership with Venture Christian Church, Indianapolis Council woman Lakeisha Jackson, and non-for-profit Pape Resource Center in Flirter and Collins Properties, as support volunteers who help coordinate and recruit registration of the Amber Woods Apartments on the far east side. Just want to let you know, they've been at one apartment community for 20 years with this amount of money and food. That's huge, to make a difference at the holiday time. Be it resolved by the City-County Council of Indianapolis, Marion County. Section 1, City-County Council- Section one, City County Councilor Lakeisha Jackson recognized a commitment made by Venture Christian Church to be a connector for residents otherwise who would go without. Section two, the council heartily recognizes Venture Christian Church for their shared vision and commitment to nourishing and sustaining residents in Indianapolis communities. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, and he has. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effective adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six dash three dash four dash fourteen. This special resolution was sponsored by Council Jackson and passed by the City County Council on this ninth day of January twenty twenty-three. Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like Mr. Pastor Vance to say a few words. He's with the church.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I have to say, for a ministry to take place like this for all these years with the results that we've seen, it takes special leaders to see this happen. Jenny Bell Palsy is my volunteer leader. Come on up here and say hi, Jenny, and then turn it back to me, okay?
Good evening. My name is Jenny Bell Palsy. I'm the Harvest Thanksgiving Ministry Leader at Venture Christian Church. We are privileged and honored to serve our neighbors in the Amber Woods community, and we look forward to continuing this ministry for many years to come. Thank you.
I'll turn it back over to John.
Yes, the minister side of me says, I want to say a few more things. Okay. Ministries like this would never take place if we did not have Jenny working at Venture, and if we did not have Lakeisha working with us at the apartment. She gets everybody so excited about this ministry on our part and there at the apartment complex. And it's just the biggest joy to be able to serve with you. And I have a special thing for you. It's an artwork I've formed that I do. I take photographs and I layer them. I make multiple copies and layer them, and it's a very unique thing, but it is a special way for me to say thank you for working with us over the years.
And this is yours and yours. And Pathway's not here, so Counselor Gray, do you want to say something? He comes to a lot of our events, so I want to step on my behalf.
Mr. President, thank you so much, Mr. President. I have had the opportunity to work closely with my colleague and district partner, Councilwoman, Chairwoman Lakeisha Jackson, on several activities on the far east side with her organization, Pathways Resource. I want to say thank you for your leadership. You are the perfect leader for that part of our city. You're the perfect partnership for me, as I've had an opportunity to observe you and learn a lot from you. The city appreciates you, and that district appreciates you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. We appreciate you. We love you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-three, which recognizes the Indiana Historical Society's Multicultural Collections Curator, Nicole Martinez-Lagrande.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very exciting... This is a special resolution recognizing Nicole Martinez-Lagrande. Whereas Nicole Martinez-Lagrande is a native Hoosier and Mexican-American, who is a direct descendant of Indiana's pioneering Mexican colony that began in the northwest Indiana in the late nineteen-tens. She has served the city of Indianapolis as a community builder for the Mid-North Quality of Life Plan convened by the Children's Museum of Indianapolis in the early nineteen-tens, and is recently a member of the Board of the Public Works in two thousand twenty-two. And whereas in two thousand sixteen, the Indiana Historical Society sought to fill in a crucial historical gap in a hundred-and-eighty-six-year-old collection, the missing narratives and voices of Indiana's largest growing demographics, Latinos and Asians. Since that time, Nicole has been leading their multicultural collection initiatives as the Indiana Historical Society's Multicultural Collections Curator through statewide outreach and collecting. The collections comprised of audio recording interviews, genealogical research, and hand-selected family photographs and documents, all previously unseen in an institution setting. And whereas since two thousand eighteen, there were two exhibits, accompanying online exhibits and traveling exhibits for both Latino and Asian communities, carefully detailing their history in Indiana. Nicole worked in coordination with Daniel Gonzalez, Indiana Historical Society's Director of Exhibition Curation. And whereas in two thousand twenty-two, the debut publication, Hoosier Latinos: A Century of Struggle, Service, and Success, outlines the personal experience of Latinos across Indiana through transcribed interviews and personal photos donated to the Indiana Historical Society. This book and research uncover some of Indiana's pioneering individuals, families, businesses, and organizations. It is the first book to address Midwestern Latino identity across the state and not a select region. By covering over one hundred-plus years of history in Indiana, it combats the common deficit narrative of Latinos as recent arrivals. They have been a long part of Indiana's democratic society, enriching the quality of life for all Hoosiers. And whereas Nicole serves as a steward of the Indianapolis Latino history through her contributions to the Digital Encyclopedia of Indianapolis, highlighting long-forgotten histories such as the early founding of the Mexican consulate in Indianapolis dating back to nineteen oh seven, Indianapolis lost barrio, and farmworker advocacy during the early years of Chicano Civil Rights era. Nicole is the Multicultural Collections Curator at the Indiana Historical Society, where she regularly contributes her research to the Indiana Historical Society blog. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Nicole Martinez-Lagrande. Section two, the council heartily thanks Nicole Martinez-Lagrande for the many hours of research and contributions to the Indiana Historical Society, her dedicated service to the city of Indianapolis. And, Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. And the motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very special resolution to me in particular, not just as the only Latino serving on the Indianapolis City County Council for some time now, but also because my family is also one of those families that moved to Indiana many years ago and helped to settle many of the farmworker areas just north of Indianapolis area. And my family is featured in this book, so it's a point of personal pride for me to present Nicole Martinez-Lagrande to you.
Thank you. This is really truly an honor, and I thank the council, I thank you, Zach, for this wonderful honor. These books are very pivotal and wonderful because it's telling the Hoosier history story in full, with two of our oldest populations in the state spanning over a century each. There are education guides that will accompany these books. And so, thank you to the Racial and Ethnic Studies Bill, sponsored and signed in law by Governor Holcomb, that this history will be silent no more. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number thirty-six, which recognizes January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
City County Council Resolution Number Five, a special resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Whereas human trafficking is defined as the use of force, threat of force, or coercion to force an individual to engage in commercial sex, marriage, labor, criminal activity, or other services, human trafficking is a pervasive problem that affects individuals of all ages from childhood to adulthood. And whereas human trafficking is an abhorrent abuse of power and a heinous crime that affects the safety, health, and dignity of millions of people locally and globally, human trafficking is the fastest-growing and second-largest criminal industry in the world, generating roughly one hundred and fifty-point-two billion dollars worldwide. And?
Whereas around the world, there are an estimated forty-point-three million victims trapped in modern-day slavery, including twenty-four-point-nine million in forced labor and fifteen-point-four million in forced marriage. And whereas, recent data shows that in two thousand nineteen saw a nineteen percent increase in a single year in human trafficking reports in Indiana. In that year alone, one hundred and fifty-seven human trafficking cases from Indiana were reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, forty of which involved minors. And whereas...
Whereas Indiana is at high risk for human trafficking because of its specific location as a state within a number of intersecting national highways. And whereas, in spite of these facts, only ten arrests for human trafficking were made in Indiana in all of two thousand nineteen. And whereas nearly half, forty-six-point-four percent, of human trafficking charges in the U.S. were cleared or dropped in two thousand nineteen. And?
Whereas victim rights groups say that human trafficking across the country has risen during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas, the two thousand twenty Indiana State Report on Human Trafficking reveals that there have been documented cases of forced marriage, forced labor, and sex trafficking of minors and adults in all ninety-two counties in Indiana. And whereas...
Whereas although trafficking has no boundaries for its victims, it disproportionately impacts ethnic and racial minorities, women and girls, LGBTQI-plus individuals, vulnerable migrants, and other historically marginalized and underserved communities, meaning it is essential to continue, to conduct preventive outreach to those populations identified as high risk of trafficking. And whereas...
January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and this council has a civic duty to recognize the vital role we play in combating human trafficking and to observe every month with appropriate activities and programs aimed at preventing every and all forms of human trafficking. Now, therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council, the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the City County Council recognizes that human trafficking is a pervasive problem affecting thousands of people, including our own city and state. Section two, the City County Council expresses its support for multidisciplinary partnerships and policy advocacies to alleviate the inequities and structural violence that contributes to the human trafficking victims feeling trapped in their exploitation. Section three, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too, and he has. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six dash three dash four dash fourteen. This special resolution was sponsored by Counselors Lewis and was passed by the City County Council this ninth day of January twenty twenty-three. And, Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
And we're going to turn it over to Mrs. White.
Any opposed, signify by nay. All right. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Now, we'll turn it over to Mrs. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is Beth White. I am the president and CEO of the Indiana Coalition to End Sexual Assault and Human Trafficking. I want to thank Leader Lewis for her leadership in this important issue. We are here this evening to thank you for the recognition that you're providing of this important issue. Human trafficking is an issue that affects everyone in community by community. It affects people who are vulnerable, and we know that people are vulnerable in our community. So I again want to thank you for your recognition. We at the Coalition are working hard to end this terrible problem in Indianapolis and all the state of Indiana. I want to thank my partners at the Indiana Trafficking Victim Assistance Program, or ITVAP, and I believe that David Westenberg is here to give a brief remarks on behalf of ITVAP.
Thank you, Beth. My name is David Westenberg. I'm the CEO of Indiana Youth Services Association. We house the ITVAP program. We started a statewide initiative to combat human trafficking and its effect on minors in two thousand sixteen. Since that time, we've identified one thousand young people who've been victimized by human trafficking and helped provide services to another five thousand young people. We have a network of sixty-two providers across the state. Our most powerful tool in this work is awareness, and your resolution tonight helps us advance that work. Thank you for your support.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number four hundred, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposal four hundred, four zero five, four twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal four hundred, two twenty-two, reappoints Afrina below, also known as Afrina Magenti, to the Domestic Hospitality Review Team. Proposal number four zero five, reappoints Bill Merle to the Assessment Intervention Center, AIC Advisory Board. And proposal number four twenty-three, reappoints Professor Lana Silva to the General Orders Board. Mr. President, these all pass out of committee on November the seventh, I'm sorry, on December the fourteenth. Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors. Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just ask the clerk to please add my name as a co-sponsor of proposal four twenty-three, please. Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. President?
Yes. Counselor Carlinho.
I also would like my name to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Additional comments from counselors. Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with respect to proposal four oh five, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to that, please.
Very good. Additional comments from counselors. All right. Seeing no further comment, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries. I'm sorry. The motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four twenty-four, referred to Admin and Finance Committee, Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal four twenty-four appoints Barbara Howard to the Alcoholic Beverage Board from Marion County, passed out of committee eight-zero. ISO move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. All right. Seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four twenty-seven, referred to Administration and Finance Committee, Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four twenty-seven appoints Myla Eldridge as the Information Technology Board, passed out of committee eight-zero. ISO move. I understand there's an amendment?
Correct. Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I will ask Counselor Vice President Adamson to read the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to amend proposal number four twenty-seven, including the digest...
the digest, by deleting the language stricken, that is, the language that is stricken through, and adding the underlined language in the highlighted portions below to read as follows. Striking the re- and reappoints, striking Myla Eldridge's name, adding Kate Sweeney-Bell's name to the digest, and likewise in the body of the resolution, replacing Myla with Kate's name. And two sections there. All counselors should have a copy of this. And I so move.
All right, there's, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Counselor Hart.
Was this a typo, or did she go through the committee process?
Yes, Counselor Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe to clarify, this is a position on the Information Technology Board that is reserved for our county clerk. And since Clerk Myla Eldridge is no longer in that position, we are moving it with Ms. Sweeney-Bell, who is our current clerk. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right. Does that answer?
Yep.
All right, very good. So the motion has been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, let us go to the board for our vote on the amendment. The amendment passes 24 to 0. And so is there a motion on proposal 427 as amended?
Mr. President, I would move that we pass proposal 427 as amended.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, then let us go to the board for our vote. Proposal 427 as amended, 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 428, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Yes, with consent, I'd like to take 428 and 429 together. 428, reappoints Sheriff Kerry Forstall to the Information Technology Board. 429, appoints Barbara Lawrence for Information Technology Board. They all pass out of committee 9-0. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. All right, motion carries 24 to 0. Next item on our agenda is proposal number 430, referred to Administration and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 430, reappoints Terry Morris to Information Technology Board, this out, passed out of committee 6-3. I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, hearing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 19 to 5. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 431, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 431 and 440 together. Thank you. Proposal number 431 reappoints Vincent Ash to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 432 reappoints Mindy Westrick to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 433 reappoints Anthony Bridgman to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeal Division 1. Proposal number 434 reappoints Craig Von Dillon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals Division 2. Proposal number 435 reappoints Patricia Duckett to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals Division 2. Proposal number 436 reappoints Roderick Bohannon to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals Division 3. Proposal number 437 reappoints Brian Barton to the Marion County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 438 reappoints Kathy Good to the Marion County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Proposal number 439 reappoints Susan Williams to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. Proposal number 440 reappoints Barney Levin Good to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal, all those proposals, I apologize, passed out of committee by a vote of 8 to 0. And Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Counselor Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to proposal 431.
Very good. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us go to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 441, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 441 appoints Andrea Neely to the City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 444, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I take proposal 444, 445 together, please, sir? Thank you very much. On December the 5th, the Park and Recreation Committee reappointed Mr. Larry Bates by a vote of 6 to 0. Proposal number 445, which reappoint Mr. Joseph Wenz to the Board of Park and Recreation, to a unanimous vote of 6 to 0. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to proposal number 445, please.
Very good. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 447, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I take proposals 447, 453, 454, 444, 76, and 477. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 447, reappoint Sandra Bryan to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal number 453, reappoints Curtis Bigsby to the Emergency Services Agency Board. Proposal number 454, reappoints Fred Purvine to the Emergency Services Agency Board. Proposal number 476, reappoints Alexandra, I'm sorry, appoints Alexandra Hall to the Domestic Business Charity Review Team. Proposal 477, appoints Victoria Handy to the Domestic Business Charity Review Team. Mr. President, they all pass out of committee on December the 14th, 2022, 8 to 0. I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none?
This library has been in a crisis since 1921, and we are waiting-
Point of order, Mr. President.
-action to remove-
Sir, you are out of order.
E.D. Robinson has already resigned.
Sir. Point of order, Mr. President.
You are out of order.
We need a library board that makes the right decisions, and it is-
Point of order, Mr. President.
Sir.
You can make the amendments in the middle of a council, apparently.
Get your hands up. Get your hands up. Now move him away from me. Okay, sit down and be quiet. Obviously, this is clearly-
Sir.
-how our council works.
Sir.
We see how this-
The last call center that slapped, that's what they do.
Sir, we'll have to ask you to be removed. You are disturbing our meeting.
Shot, killed inside, detained, murdered in front of his house by ICP officers. Like this thing, right?
That's right.
That's right.
What is this shit?
Represent us.
Disputable.
Is that your police that protects us?
The ones who just gave a whole bunch of accolades to, that's how you treat us?
Yeah, that's violent prevention.
We work at the Congress, we support this.
That's what y'all do to us?
Y'all can remove me too.
We'll proceed. If there are any more disruptions, we will shut down until everyone is escorted out of the room.
That's what the library board said.
They wanted to be shut down.
None of them on the agenda. There's no one on the agenda.
All right, this proposal was improperly moved and seconded. Were there additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. Next item on our agenda is proposal number 478, referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 478, reappoints Tanya Nijay to the City County Audit Committee, passed out of committee 8-0. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Clerk Gonzalez.
Proposals number 2 through 5 were all sponsored by Counselor Osley and referred to the Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 2 is a general resolution that approves amendments to the lease between the City of Indianapolis and the City Market Corporation, revising the footprint of the lease premises and generating income to support city market operation. Proposal 3 is a general resolution approves, that approves a declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission, designating the City Market redevelopment area, the City Market North allocation area, and the City Market East allocation area, and adopting a redevelopment plan for the City Market redevelopment area. Proposal number 4 is a special ordinance which authorizes the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12,300,000 for Phase 1 and $6,500,000 for Phase 2 for the City Market redevelopment project 151 and 251 East Ohio Street and 222 East Market Street, to include renovation of the Gold Building into 350 apartment units, both luxury and affordable, upgrades and updates to the parking structure, the construction of a pedestrian corridor, and renovations to the west plaza and east wing of the City Market to include a new residential tower, new retail space, and a new public amenity space, District 11. Proposal number 5 is a general ordinance amending the code to clarify the definition of the City Market, consistent with plans to redevelop the plaza to the east of the historic Market House and to make related changes. Proposal number 6 is a general ordinance introduced by Counselor Ethan Evans, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, and it amends Chapter 231 of the Code regarding protections for the homeless. Proposal number 7 is a general ordinance sponsored by Counselor Osley, referred to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends Chapter 151 of the Code, Articles 5, 6, and 7 concerning council proceedings. Proposals number 8 through 10 are council resolutions sponsored by Council Mascari and referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal number 8 approves the mayor's appointment of Dan Parker as chief deputy mayor. Proposal number 9 approves the mayor's appointment of Judith B. Thomas as deputy mayor for neighborhood engagement. And proposal number 10 approves the mayor's appointment of Scarlett A. Andrews as the deputy mayor for economic development. Proposal number 11 is a council resolution sponsored by Council Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, and it approves the mayor's appointment of Lauren Rodriguez as the deputy mayor for public health and safety. Proposal number 12 is a council resolution sponsored by Council Mascari, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, and it approves the mayor's appointment of Joe Glass as the director of the Office of Audit and Performance. Proposal number 13 is a council resolution introduced by Counselor Lewis, and is referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, and it approves the mayor's appointment of Abby Brands as the director of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services. Proposal number 14 is a council resolution introduced by Counselor Oliver and referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee. It approves the mayor's appointment of Phyllis Boyd as the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Proposals number 15 through 17 are council resolutions sponsored by Council Robinson and referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal 15 approves the mayor's appointment of Martine Romi Bernard Tucker as the director of the Office of Public Health and Safety. Proposal number 16 approves the mayor's appointment of Randall Taylor as the chief of police for the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. And proposal number 17 approves the mayor's appointment of Ernest V. Malone as the chief of the Indianapolis Fire Department. Proposal number 18 is a council resolution sponsored by Counselor Adamson and referred to the Public Works Committee, and it approves the mayor's appointment of Brandon Hergit as the director of the Department of Public Works. Proposals number 32, 34, and 35 are all council resolutions, all sponsored by Counselor Lewis and referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 32 appoints Eric McBride to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate. Proposal 34 appoints David Baker to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Commission. And proposal number 35 appoints Michael James to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Mr. President, this concludes the introduction of proposals.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal numbers 21 through 31, 2023, are all rezonings that were certified to the council for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no one wishes to call any of these proposals down for a public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of these proposals for review? Yes, Counselor Ethan Evans?
Were you on, I just had a question. Were you on proposals 21 through 24 or 25 through 31 right now?
I was taking them all together. Do you have one in particular?
I did wish to call down proposal number 26.
Counselors, I will request a five-minute recess. All right, all right, counselors. I believe that Counselor Ethan Evans has a statement he'd like to make.
Mr. President, I would like to rescind my previous vote.
His vote or motion?
Sorry, motion.
All right, very good. So then we will, let us proceed with the question about if anyone wishes to call down any of the proposals 21 through 31 of 2023 for a public hearing. Is there a counselor who wishes to call any of these down? All right, seeing none, proposal numbers 21 through 31, 2023 will now pass into law. There is no business under Special Orders public hearing, and there is no business under Special Orders unfinished business. So we'll now proceed to Special Orders final adoption. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 367, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to proposal 431.
to special orders final adoption. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number three sixty-seven, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposal number three sixty-seven and three sixty-eight together. Thank you. Proposal three sixty-seven and three sixty-eight were heard together in committee. Proposal three sixty-seven approves a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission and designating a new tax increment financing TIF allocation area known as the Guilford Midtown Allocation Area and an amendment to the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the North Midtown Economic Development Area and the Washington North Midtown Allocation Area. Proposal number three sixty-eight authorizes the issuance of a developer-backed tax increment revenue bond to sixty-two twenty Guilford Avenue LLC in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed seven million, five hundred for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, and/or refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipment, equipping of a development consisting of approximately two hundred and thirty-two residential rental units, two hundred and fifty parking spaces, three thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet of retail and commercial space known as Guilford Midtown Project located at sixty-two twenty Guilford Avenue in the newly created Guilford Midtown Allocation Area. The proposals passed out a committee by a vote of seven to two. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the committee and this council for their patience as we postponed this proposal to get the final details worked out. I think we settled in a good place to move forward, and I hope it earns the support of my colleagues here tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Additional comments? Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if there was anybody from the mayor's office here. This is the proposal that I had asked if we could get a sunset date or a limit or something to revisit at another time on the...
Is there anyone here from the administration who can ask, answer Chairwoman Jackson's query?
Members of the council, my name is Scarlett Andrews. I am the deputy mayor of Economic Development. To answer your question, I think on a sunset date, we're willing to work with the council on each and every proposal. I think that we recognize that we needed a little bit more time on this one to pull it together, but we don't yet know what the market is going to do. I think there are several factors that we would want to work with the council to monitor closely, to understand what the best policy should be in the future, including inflation, interest rates, construction prices of key materials in some of these projects, and understanding what rent rates and occupancy rates are in our high-demand neighborhoods or our high-opportunity neighborhoods. So I don't have a date that I think that the policy should change, but I think we should be evaluating it with each project, and that's something that I would hope that we can do in partnership with the council moving forward.
And so you put on the record that you're willing to come back. You'll monitor these, and you'll put on the record that you'll come back to the council if requests and need be. Let me rephrase that, Mr. President, if I may. How often are you willing to come back to report on this actual special, because this is special, this declaratory resolution part?
Yeah, so I'm happy to come back and report broadly on affordable housing or on these types of proposals at any time that the council requests. And certainly, with each project that we bring forward, we would report back on what the circumstances are of the project and why we would be proposing one policy or another.
So let me make this clear. It's not you or this administration. We set something like this into policy, into play in legislation. It's, that is forgotten and it's on the books, and anybody can twist this along and kick it down a road when we've long gone, you've long gone, this current administration's long gone, and we of council members are long gone. Does that make sense to what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Vice President Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Chairwoman Jackson's point's well taken. I think if I get, for my own clarity there, I think what I would like to see is, because this is dealing with an issue of affordability that we all take very seriously here, since this is going to be something that will be replacing a procedure that is already in place to address that, if we could get updates on how effective it is. Is this working? Is it doing what we hoped it would, as opposed to how successful the previous way was going?
Absolutely, and I'm happy to provide that kind of update whenever the council does request.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. President.
Chairman Jackson.
Thank you for entertaining me one last time. I guess it's the win-ever's getting me. That's...
Do you want to have a specific...
Yes, either they're going to come back once a year and give us an update. It's the win-ever. I don't want this, that's where it's going to get convoluted. We have to request it. I think there's going to be a gap, and the ball's going to drop. I think if we're going to do this, they have to come back annually and give an update on the status of this.
Then proceed with the request.
I'd like to request that the administration give us an annual update on this new declaratory resolution for this proposal.
Very good.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to provide an annual update.
Thank you.
Before you do that, why don't you set a month?
Do we want it before or after budget, sir, if I can set that?
Your pleasure.
Before budget, before budget. So, or presentation, so budget is August.
So would that be July?
So July. Yeah, July, ma'am.
July is great.
So annual be, annual in July.
Yes, I'm happy to provide an annual update in July.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman. Additional comments from councilors? Chairman Gray.
Yes. Is this all high-end residential living? Is there anything in here for housing, affordable housing? How many of these apartments is in there for affordable housing?
These are a hundred percent market rate units. What we ask the developer to do is to pay a fee to the Housing Trust Fund to offset a set aside of units.
So is there the MBE, WBE?
Yes, they are required to meet our standards of XBE participation, which is twenty-seven percent total.
Okay.
Good. Additional comments? Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you one last time. I really appreciate you, Mr. President. Again, Deputy Director, thank you again for your work on this, for being creative, for us to have ways to come up with affordable housing, because we need that, especially in your report. When you do report in July, can we see the equity from this resolution, from this proposal, the equity going into the housing fund, authority funding, going to the city? So I'd like to see the correlation in two. And again, I'm not against administration or you. I think this is a good step, and we need to build money for our city to affordable housing. I just want to be conscientious moving forward, that we do make sure that there are always going to be people replacing us, that we have something in place to govern and check and balance. So again, I applaud you and thank you for your work. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Understood. Thank you, Chairwoman Jackson.
All right, very good. Additional comments or questions from councilors? Chairman Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of comments. One with the sponsors. I'd like to go on as sponsor on both these proposals. That's number one. Number two is when the Midtown TIF was created, one of the things we did was create something called the Midtown Economic Council, their MEC, and they weigh in and give their view on items that are funded by the TIF or that are adjacent to the TIF or that will benefit the TIF. And in this particular instance, they weighed in on this proposal. And they weighed in on this proposal in support, as I am, but not dissimilar from what you're hearing from other councilors commenting on the Housing Trust Fund in this new approach. They wanted to request that special consideration be given, that affordable housing be put in or near broader bulk to reflect that the funding came from there, but also to make sure that funding for affordable housing be connected to the broader area. They're concerned that there might not be enough affordable housing down the line, and they asked that I pass that on. So I talked to the deputy mayor earlier, and I look forward to talking to her about it more down the line.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman. Excellent. Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries nineteen to five. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three seventy-one, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you. With consent, I would like to take proposal number three seventy-one and three seventy-two together. Thank you. Proposal three seventy-one and proposal three seventy-two were heard together in committee. Proposal three seventy-one approves a declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission and designating new economic development and tax increment financing TIF allocation area known as Virginia Economic Development Area and the Virginia Allocation Area to allow twenty-five-year tax increment bond financing for the proposed Virginia project, which is located at the proposed allocation area. Proposal three seventy-two authorizes the issuance of an economic development tax increment revenue bond to WC GPD Fountain Square LLC in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed eight million, three hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, and refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping of a multifamily residential development consisting of approximately two hundred and four residential units, two hundred and ten parking spaces, fourteen hundred square feet of retail, commercial space, and other amenities such as a public art space known as the White Castle Inc. Building Project located at nine twenty-one Virginia Avenue in the newly created Virginia Economic Development and Allocation Area. The proposals passed out a committee by a vote of six to two. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries nineteen to five. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four twenty-five, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number four twenty-five and four twenty-six together. Thank you. Proposals number four twenty-five and four twenty-six were heard together in committee. Proposal number four twenty-five approves a declaratory resolution and amendments to the redevelopment plan for the near Eastside redevelopment project area of the Metropolitan Development Commission and establishing a new allocation area in said area designated as the thirteen thirty-one Washington Allocation Area. Proposal number four twenty-six authorizes the issuance of a developer-backed tax increment revenue bond to TWG Development LLC in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed seven million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of financing, reimbursing, or refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, renovation, installation, and equipping of a multifamily residential development consisting of approximately two hundred new construction, highly-quality apartment units with associated parking and amenities and approximately three thousand two hundred square feet of new retail and commercial space known as the thirteen thirty-one Washington Street Project located at thirteen thirty-one and fourteen zero one East Washington Street and twenty-three and forty-one South Oriental Street in the new thirteen thirty-one Washington Allocation Area. The proposals passed out a committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries nineteen, sorry, twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four forty-two, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number four forty-two approves the twenty twenty-three budget of the Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement District. The district is focused on beautification of the area, including arts and urban forestry. The district also is focusing on public safety. The proposal passed out a committee by a vote of nine to one. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. All right, motion carries twenty to four. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four forty-three, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number four forty-three approves the twenty twenty-three budget of the Wooddrift Place Economic Improvement District. The proposal passed out a committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number four five five, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals four forty-five through four fifty-seven. Thank you. Proposal number four forty-five authorizes lane turn restrictions on twenty-third and twenty-fourth Street at Delaware Street in District eleven. Proposal number four fifty-six authorizes turn lane restrictions on thirty-second and thirty-fourth Street at College Avenue in District nine. And proposal number four fifty-seven authorizes residential parking permit at six twenty-nine Lexington Avenue in District sixteen. Counselor Gray moves, seconded by Counselor Jones, to send proposals numbers four fifty-five, four fifty-six, and four fifty-seven to the full council. If you pass the recommendation, that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Yes, Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On proposal number four fifty-six in my district at thirty-second, thirty-fourth Street, left turns, that's a highly constructed area. A traffic study was done by DPW that merited the accidents that were being happening at two-two location that designated right turns would be made, et cetera, et cetera. At the same time, Mr. President, the study based off of data is what they're recommending, those little turns. But at the same time, we have big construction going into Fall Creek, and the contractors and how traffic is sometimes diverted into congested area. And then we see signs up that says, "Don't do this, don't do that." Sometimes no signs at all. It's the fault of the contractors. They're doing things and not notifying the residents affected that this is what's going to happen, so be ready for it. You can't park here tomorrow. You can't do this, you can't do that. So I'm asking, and certainly I want this to go forward, Mr. President, with support of my fellow councilor, hopefully support this, but I just, Mr. Adamson, I'd like to have a meeting with someone, DPW, to talk about what I just described, about some things occurring. It's a particular site there now. Sometimes it occurs, and the public is, rightfully so. To protect the public, DPW put up signs saying, "Don't do this, don't do that," because the construction has happened, and they're trying to change something. And sometimes this carries over from not one day, but maybe three or four days. So I'd like to have a meeting with Counselor Adamson and DPW.
Very good.
And with the staff, Mr. Tattlick, maybe down Fall Creek, to kind of work through some of these, talk through things that will all occur all over the city. Sometimes things that are happening, they occur, and they come out with a sign that says this, "No more left turns, no more right turns," and maybe they leave the sign up, they don't take it down. So mostly communication. So I just want to feed that into, I've already talked to Counselor Adams about that, and I want to, DPW, meet with them this week, next week.
I do believe we have the...